Okay, I call this meeting of the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District to order. It is the 15th of February and it is 6:07 PM. A special meeting about the budget, but the first order of business, the Commissioner training date, do either of you have problems with three training dates that the...
The 21st would be kinda tough for me.
Okay, so 21st, no?
The 30th I'd like, the, let's see, what was the one before that, was the one before the 21st?
14th.
14th would be good for me probably, I'm probably out of town.
Okay, 30th it is.
Okay.
So, the date's been decided, would you, um, I can call Wendy and tell her if you will get hold of Mr. Frosch and tell him, can you do that, do you have a phone number?
I will verbally tell him.
Thank you, that would be helpful.
And then I will also call CIAW first thing in the morning and nail it down before Bruce gets taken away. I asked her to hold him until tomorrow anyway.
Okay. All right, next.
Six o'clock?
Um, is that, does six o'clock work for both of you?
Mm-hmm.
6:00 PM it is.
Mm-hmm.
Eighty-nine for you military types, which is most of us anyway. Okay. All right, next topic on the agenda, the 2016 budget review. Mr. Director, are you gonna give us a presentation or...
I am, I am, and it'll be relatively short, probably less than 10 minutes to go through it. So, and the reason it'll be short is because all through the year, most of this stuff we've covered throughout, and then when, especially during the 2017 budget presentation, a lot of these were addressed with some remedies and things like that. But they're still worth, I'm gonna hit a highlight on a few of the things in there that I wanna bring, that I feel need to be discussed here.
Oh, sorry, can I interrupt just a minute? I forgot to say, in attendance tonight are Commissioner Holly, Commissioner Ford, and Commissioner Hoffmeyer. Thank you, sorry.
Excellent. So, I'm not gonna address like I would in a quarterly review or a budget review where I might do 40 to 90 line items, probably less than 15 line items total that I'm gonna hit.
Okay.
And some of the numbers when I talk around it, and that's for my convenience, that's only so I don't have to spit out six numbers in two decimal points. So, also recall from last year when we did the 2015, there's nothing required after this. There's no, there's no motion, there's no, I mean, you guys can do what you wanna do, but this doesn't get reported to anyone. The only time we ever have to answer anything would be if the state auditors ask us, "So, what was this about here?" And then we'll just answer it. So, we just have to have an answer for that. So, in front of you, you've got a color key that I wanna quickly go over. The color key is mine, this is, I use this right here, it's my assessment of things. And it actually makes sense to use these numbers now at the end because we're through it, this is a complete thing. So, there are two sheets there, there's one that says revenue color coding, that should be the top one of the two that you have. And so, what I put was red, and I just followed the way I used to do it out in the, when I was in the corporate world. Anything less than 75% of targeted revenue is red, between 75 and basically 87.5% is yellow, 87.5% below to 12.5% above would be green. And then blue, which is really good, is anything that's greater than 12.5% above projected revenue. On the next page, on the expense color code, blue is anything that's less than 87.5% of the targeted expense, so that's good. If it's between 87.5% below the expense to 12.5 above, it went green. Between 12.5 and 25 above expense, the projected expense is yellow, and then red is anything greater than 25% above the expense. So, that's just so you'll understand how I came up with the numbers. There are numbers, there are things in there that aren't, that are color coded differently than those numbers, but that's because even though they might be outside of the number, it's still what we consider to be, and me, since these colors are really for me, that I consider, okay, I'm okay, I understand this one here, and that's, that one's okay like that. But there might be two or three of them. So, with that said, overall 2016 performance, I'm pleased with. Revenues were 951K versus a 978K target, that's 97.2% of the goal, and any, in any business out there, that would be a good number. Expenses were 936K against a 977K projected, which is 95.9% of projected expenses, and anytime expenses are less than projected, that's good. And the bottom line is for the first time since 2010, we operated in the, in the black. So, we did, we netted about 15K in 2016, which, this next number sounds really good. When you go against what we projected to what we did, it's over 1512% above numbers, so that really sounds good whenever you do it that way. But in actuality, it's about a 1.6% margin, which is still better than, less than negative margin, so when you look at it that way. I think this is due to a lot of things, and, but I'm, but I'm gonna be totally upfront, I give the credit to my senior staff, those present and those that aren't here, because they're the ones that had to embrace a new business rigor that I, that I brought here. And they took an operating model that most of them weren't accustomed to working under, and they made it work for them. And they rose to the challenge, so I give my personal thanks, and I wanna publicly praise them for what they did, because that's really where each of them taking care of their departments as best they could is how it all happened there. So, that same approach will go into 2017, of course, always with safety being our, patron's safety being the number one thing. So, I'm gonna move into the revenue now, and I'm moving pretty fast. Again, a lot of these were discussed throughout the year, the 2017 budget presentation, so I'm really, what I'm gonna try to hit here are the red items, because I think they're worth mentioning. Punch cards, we mentioned in the 2015 review a year ago that there were a lot of purchases for punch cards in December of 15, which were ahead of the price hike, the rate hike increase in January. But we never really saw the replenishment of that over the year like we sort of expected, we weren't sure. One of the reasons, I think, we believe that one of the main reasons that we don't see that, and most of it goes around the lap swim, is our pricing structure, which is a future meeting. I know that my intent isn't to get into pricing structure discussion, that needs to be in a future meeting, and Julie and I are working on that as well. AM lap swim is $5, so from 6:00 to 12:00, it's $5 to come in here. And if you come in after 12:00, it's $3.50, a punch card's $4.25. It does nothing for anyone after there. So, it really, and 2/3 of our lap swimmers, and I counted them, 2/3 of our lap swimmers come after 12:00. So, we have a punch card that is good for 1/3 of the swimmers, and it, we just need to address that in a separate form as we go forward. So, that's really one of the main, I think, one of the main. It does no good for AM lap swimmers to buy a punch card, which is, you know, I'd come later, come after 12:00 if I can do it and pay 75 cents less than even the punch card to go swim, so.
I agree.
So, on that, that's on number 11. Line item 37, special events programs, is this one, one contributing factor to this was me, because early in the year, like we're facing this year right now, is, is a cash flow problems. And I held back on some of the special events that were scheduled because I wasn't sure how, how, I wanted to have the mind to make sure we make payroll first, bills second, and I wasn't sure on how things were gonna fall out there. So, I held back on that good budget reviews. Also, we had some conflicts early in the year where we had a couple of lifeguard classes that, although now we've ironed out the deconfliction with that, that impacted some of the ability to do some of the things there. Not a lot, but it was one, it was a contributor, and Jessica has fixed all that with Julie, and those things are ironed out. On line item 46 on SCUBA, you know, he, Pat is, is the same as anyone else. If he doesn't have a class, he cuts it and they don't show up. So, if they don't, you know, we don't need the forecast that they were gonna do, or that they had given us at the beginning of the year. Line item 47 and 48, I'm lumping into one here, those are the private party rentals and open swim party rentals. The price did go up, as you all recall, we went up, actually somewhat significantly. We sort of felt like it would impact us in the year, and we think that it did impact people using it. But according to Julie, it looks like we're starting to see now a pickup in, in these things. People are, have adjusted, and we're starting to see...
That's a natural reaction you'd expect.
Exactly. But one thing that we do have, that you'll see in my, in my staff report for next week, but we've been working now, Julie, Jessica and I have been working with the Whidby Island Mermaids, if you know who they are. The, we've been, we've had about three meetings, and you've had a couple extra going around. But they're gonna now be an offering to, to events and to parties, so it'll just be like a modular add-on. So, we're hoping that having that, they're, they're gonna advertise it, we're gonna advertise it, that'll, that'll help now bring in more of these things. It's, and now there's a reason, there's another reason to come here. And it's cool, because you get these little kids, mostly 9, 10 and under, you know, and they get to swim with a mermaid, you know, and the girls have been here, and they swim pretty well with their mermaid things, so they do, they do pretty well. So, anyway, we, we're hoping that with the natural rise, that we're somewhat seeing a trend going with this additional add-on will make that go. Pool group rentals on line item number 54, all we got this year were the dragon boat people. And I, so, I mean, it wasn't, it's red, it wasn't a lot, but you know, from a percentage perspective, it's red, and we're trying, as we talked about through the whole 2017 budget thing, we're trying all these new ways to try to get the word out and market what we do here so we can bring in more revenue, and still keep our expenses down. All right, in fact, there are the dragon boat people now, as if on cue. All right, I'm gonna move into expenses...
No, I was just looking.
I'm gonna move into expenses now. 93, team admin. If you recall, mid-year, we reduced team admin down based on what we thought was gonna be the use of it. It was a premature, well, it was quite a bit lower than it needed to go, actually, because when we moved to this new swim contract for the, for the Inwax families, that ended up taking a lot of time.
It's for the red, oh, that's right.
Line item 93. It took, it took some time, took a lot of time there. And the size of the meat in October actually took a lot more of Julie's time than the team admin rolled. So, it, it ended up going past what we, we thought we were safe when we came down to a number, but it ended up going away. On line item number 158, maintenance other to keep the, keep our vehicle moving, and we only really use one vehicle. It needed, in addition to what had already been done to it, a new starter and transmission flex required out there for that.
The van is one we actually drive?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, one, line 175 on the bank fees, on, on top of the late fees and the other things we've talked about all year long, there were a larger number of deposit slip orders, which I guess is good, because we're depositing money, and, and new checks, and they're not as, I haven't had to buy checks in a while, but they're not as cheap as they used to be to buy a box of checks from Clark or whoever banks them out there. Line 178, dues and memberships, I take, I take the hit on that when we revised everything, I just neglected to put in the Chamber of Commerce bill in there, and that's what that was, as well as line line, item number 181, which is the landscape maintenance out there. Again, my error, when we did the mid-year revision, I knew there were, I knew there were two contracts, but I guess I got overcome by events and other things, other line items working on it, and I just didn't, I didn't put the math in there correctly. So, that was, that's a hit on me. And those are the expenses. So, the summary, as we see the summary here, while there are lots of areas that you see in there that were above, below, some, a little bit more out of whack than what we want, and others, we still made 15K profit for the year, and I'll, I'll be gone in a second. In that, we, in keeping with that, we believe that we did so in conjunction with the district goals that we had set. We were able to continue to promote healthy living and recreation for the patrons and the people of the district. The pool has always been maintained in a clean and safe manner out there, so, the whole district facilities are. And especially by having a profitable budget above and beyond just balance right there, I think we're able to show the public that we, we can engender their trust in the money now. Well, I mean, we have to continue to do it, but I think it's, it goes toward engendering their trust that we can be responsible and manage the money that they give us to do what we do here for them. We're not gonna sit back on this, keep the same rigor going into 2017. We have to, and we're gonna do it to, and try and get better every year at what we do here. So, with that, I relinquish the floor.
Okay. Doc, go ahead.
Yes. You're gonna go on to the spending next, or not?
Oh, he already reviewed all of it.
Oh, you reviewed all of it?
There weren't, there weren't that many that were red, so he only, he only looked at the red stuff.
Oh, all right, well then, so, team, uh, line 93, team admin, that, what do you expect that'll be cut, cut, will be cut in half when the coach starts taking over the line financial part of it?
Probably more than half, it'll be more than half.
Okay.
They have one more thing to turn over, and it'll probably, what Julie will keep is about two hours a month, and that's to put the bills out for them, so when they come in.
Right.
And I might, I might throw a couple of hours in there in case Coach is sick or something, and she needs to take care of something for him. But I would estimate that it would be closer to 75% reduction in that line item.
Okay, great, that's super, thanks.
Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, uh-huh.
Okay.
So, but, well, let's see, I think we've, I've already, I asked about the vacation and, and apparently...
We will, we, if, and you're gonna talk to an accountant?
Well, I'll try and find an accountant, somebody I can talk to, explain it to me, because I don't understand.
Okay, if you find something, then please let us know.
It seems to me there should be some money coming from that, that shows up at the, in the bottom line.
Yes. And, and Commissioner, I see your point of view on that. I just have never viewed it that way in anything I've ever been associated with, so it hasn't been a flag to me. But we will also investigate to see if there's a way that it will...
And I had the same question, of course, about the medical insurance, because the medical insurance was, line 188 is 14, 897, which you said is our total bill, our total bill of 90% for the employee and 50% for the thing, and then they pay the other part out of theirs.
Yes, yes.
So, I understand that, that's the total bill, so that's, that's not a problem.
Correct, correct.
And then the final thing was, line 194 insurance, CIAW insurance. I just wondered if you could look over the next few months, maybe explore a possible less expensive insurance company or liability insurance company with essentially the same coverage. I don't know, there must, just look for some competition.
Uh, and when, when we get close to the summer, Jeff Olson, who's our broker...
Yeah.
...intends to do that.
Okay.
We talked about that this year. We went with him because of the people, of the, I don't know, and Commissioner Holly was on, I was just sitting in the audience, she, but she was on the board. I think they found three people to get a quote from or some, three or four, and, and the rest of them were exponentially higher than...
It's, my, my, as I recall, it was like, this was the only game...
Well, that's right.
This was the only people that were willing to take us on, and it's because we were not a good risk. We've gone...
I can, I can understand.
We've gone for some time, we're hopefully less risky now. We're, and so, but that's a good point. And so, if our, if our broker, and he will, he wants to maintain us as a customer, so.
Yes.
But very good point.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's all right.
It was very scary, I thought we weren't gonna be able to be insured.
A broker, sometimes like an agent, that can get a little ugly.
I know, but we're like three times with fidelity.
So, being that they were willing to keep our doors open.
Well, because...
No, I know, I know why.
Hopefully they can give them a chance to match.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what Jeff said, he wanted to, it's time, sort of, blind, blind sample, and, and not let, he basically, he thinks CIAW will probably be the horse, but he, he wants them to feel that there's competition.
Exactly. Just being that they help keep the doors open, it'd be nice if we could stay with them.
And they've been, they have been great. Anytime we call them, they're spot on with anything, so.
Yeah, but I don't wanna, I don't want them paying $5,000 a year more just because we like them.
Or 10, or 20, or whatever, yes, no way.
It was, it was more than...
It was 30,000 more, I think.
Well, I know, but I mean, they probably won't come down that much, but I think we could maybe get $5,000 less.
Well, see, that is part of what we talked about in, in December, after the, we were going through the loan...
Okay, I'm just being realistic, I think it's gonna be addressed, it's gonna be...
Okay, so let me make a, a point. We're gonna have two action items that I see for the executive director. Look at the insurance cost with, and the other was, look at how, how to show vacation pay...
Right.
On the, better on the budget, so that it, it doesn't look like it's double money or, and we also, but we've always talked about that, we also still need to show what we owe to people, that they, if they don't take it, it does carry into the next year, that we owe them this, we're gonna have to pay them if they leave.
And that's, that's being done. What's not being, what's not being, what's trouble, we're having trouble figuring is this year's.
Yeah.
Their full salary plus...
Yeah, exactly, no.
It only applies to salary people anyway, because hourly people, when they take their vacation, they just don't take that, or now it comes out of theirs, so they can pay this thing.
Yeah, I understand that, that's what I'm saying. That's why I was thinking on you and the coach and Matt.
Seems like the one other action item for him and us was the punch pass revision.
Oh, you're...
That, that's coming in, that's coming in, we're, we're gonna get the, the program review subcommittee anyway without them, so.
Yeah, good.
Okay.
If you wanna make it an action item, you can, but I mean, it's already in our, it's already in our queue.
We need to, we need to do it, but it's like, how about if we ask, when, why don't we set ourselves a date, when are we gonna discuss the pricing, pricing structure?
I don't think we're in a position to set a date at the moment.
We should probably set soon.
If we don't, if we don't set one, we're not gonna meet it, so.
If we raise the rate, we gotta raise the military rates for the afternoon too, so we need to factor that in so that they can, we can get that to the military before September.
Yeah.
See? Correct?
Okay, it's February now, I say by the April meeting, we should be able to talk to the, the board, the...
Oh, yeah.
So, but we're gonna talk about it.
Actually, I write it on, I had it tentatively on the March thing, but yeah, April's good.
Um, that'll give us a chance to have talked about everything.
Okay.
So, let's, let's, we'd shoot for March, but it's like, for sure by April.
Okay.
Okay. But that way we can have it for the summer.
We'll bring you a mask next time.
Yeah, breathe that way. So, no later than the April meeting?
Correct.
Okay. All right, Doc, did you have anything else that...
I'll be, I'm done.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer, did you have any specific...
I think that was it, thank you.
All right. Um, I like that you have the positive number at the end of this budget. I do not want you to regard this as a positive year. It was, in my opinion, I'm not pleased with how the budget ended up for the year. If you'll remember, we started out with $28,000 that was supposed to go into the reserve. And then on, I was, and I remember we've gone through this, and it's like we had to keep hacking at it and hacking at it, and there was $1,000 on there. And you have it marked as green, that, because it was an expense, I get that, but it's like the fact that we couldn't even get $1,000 into the reserve on this budget, it's the very first line in expenses, because you couldn't even get $1,000 in it, that's not a positive thing. That's, that should be double red, that should be orange, there should be flames shooting out of the budget. So, now, I know there's $13,000 left over, so I'm hoping that that $13,000 isn't gonna be, let's just spend it, but it'll go, and I'm hoping, hoping once we get past the beginning of the year doldrums where we don't have income coming in, that $13,000 could actually go back into the reserves, so that the $28,000 is, you know, is still not made, but that was a number that was in the back of my head, because we still owe the money from two years ago that was promised, that was gonna be paid back, and, oh, it didn't get paid. Not your fault, you weren't here. But, anyway. So, that was my biggest concern with the 2016 budget. So, don't pat yourself on the back too hard. Your staff did an awesome job, but I, I don't consider this a, a great budget, I can, or a great budget, I, I consider it, we didn't get the money paid back from the reserve, we're supposed to, and the, even $1,000 was not done. So, I don't understand that. But, that was, I think that was the only thing, because we have gone over and over and over this budget. That was the only thing. But, you know what, we're getting there. But I would, I would, like I said, we're getting there, but it's not, it's not as rosy as you painted. And I would say, if we don't, that's something that you need to look at. Is it a positive or a negative if we haven't put money in the reserve? That is absolutely a negative. So, from now on, I would recommend that that particular expense be regarded as, the money need, if, if you don't need that budget item, that expense, then it's, it's not a good thing. That's, that's the one expense that we should be meeting, or if you don't meet it, and there's a reason, and it's like, we had extra maintenance costs, or whatever. But it's like, I would say that's something that should be looked at negatively. Do you get what I'm saying?
I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
But, and, and I hear what you're saying too. But in previous years, we, we took a lot more money out of the reserves, and, out of the reserves than we've took, because I, I figure we, over the last, I, as I figured with the, when I had my little discussion with him, we're close to $200,000 since the last levy. So, that's, that's a considerable improvement.
And we did, we did pay back the money that, that the current director had to take out of the reserve fund at the beginning, he paid it all back. Awesome. Again, though, at the beginning of the year, we said, we're gonna have $28,000, and it's like the fact that we didn't pay any of that, that money that was budgeted went elsewhere, or $13,000 of it is still on the table.
Yep, we need to incrementally increase the reserves over the years.
At, at the point in time where we planned on putting that money back, did, did that coincide, or when did we find out about the kerfluffle with the, with the county money?
Which one?
With...
Oh, that was like last in the...
I just wondered if that didn't...
It was like June or July, August there.
No, he found out about it in the fall, in December, literally.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
So, it was after the budget era was already out, so you're right, that kind of...
I just wondered if that had an adverse effect.
No, it all, it, it all did, and it's, and I get that, but it was still, you know, that's, and we had, we had, I just, we had adjusted the budget down to, okay, we, we now think we're gonna have $1,000, and not, and on this budget, not one penny went into the reserve, although I know we paid back the 2016 funds, but it was like, and it was marked as green, that just seemed to me kind of obscene, that it was like, it's marked as green because there was this $1,000 expense to us that didn't get met. So, are, what's, what's the plan for the $13,000? Is it going into the, once we get, or is that just...
That, that, I was gonna discuss that, my intent was, most, if not all of it, in addition to what we had budgeted to go into it already for this year, which make up the 15, the 13 grand out of the 15, the...
Right.
Thing there, would be, and I would come to you and say, we either all of it, or we wanna keep 2,000 of it and put 12 grand into it, or, yes, sir.
We'd wait until April, so that we don't have to be thinking...
Right, well, I want, until we get the date done in May, or first of May, yeah.
Yeah, I think in April, okay.
And, yeah, so, I'm fine with that.
So, we don't have to take out this thing you're working on with the bank.
Yeah. It's so good to know how much it would cost us to, to borrow money and to have that, in case we have something that the emergency fund will cover. So, I say continue with that, although I don't ever wanna spend money to get money, as, or, not ever. I, but I prefer, I would prefer to save money out of, out of...
Borrow from ourselves.
Yeah, exactly.
But I think, you know, as, as a CEO with board members, or an executive, an executive director with us, members of the public, it's, it's probably a good thing being able to paint a slightly rosier picture than there is, and hopefully that's something that can be sold to the public.
I'm an optimist.
Yes, that's a good thing.
Yeah, there are things in here that I'm not happy with, but a 14 grand profit, first time in six years, I view that as a good thing. I don't view that as a bad thing. It doesn't matter which line item might get it next year, but I understand where Commissioner Holly's coming from, and I don't, I don't disagree that that's, with her opinion, I'm just saying I view it differently.
Yeah, and, and that's fine. I'm just saying, it's like, since we started the year with, we're gonna put this much money, and then we kept chipping away at it, and now we end up with this money at the end of the year, it's like, okay, and that's better than a negative. So, you know, that's like...
The, the, I would say, there are a lot of reasons for it. One of the primary reasons for it was expense controls.
Yes, and that, and I, I agree with you that your staff and you already commended on that, and I'm very happy about that.
Of course, that's why we're supposed to have a reserve to cover that, and that's why we need eventually sort of get back to having a reserve.
And that's, and that's one of the things, when we talk, what, what do you do with a 14, nine, almost, what do you do with it at the end of the year? Well, there might be, you know, that's, I don't, I don't know that I wanna set a defined answer for it, but it should be me come to the board and say, of this, I wanna put it all into the reserve, or I wanna keep $13,212, or put $13,212 in because I need this other balance for something else. But my, my intent, as discussed with the staff, is predominantly, most if not all of that, I would put into the reserve, because it should, you know, that's profit, so we, we mark it in there unless it's earmarked.
Come April, May.
And then that should help us build the reserve quicker than just the average, you know.
And I don't know whether you can foresee now, but do you foresee basically we have enough in our M&amp;O account and, and our other accounts to sort of make it to that, the big payoff?
I, I'm praying, I pray.
Well, I mean, it seems like less $14,000 better than we were last year.
Not, not cash on hand, though.
I think we are. I, I looked at it, compared, I looked at January last year to January this year, and we've, we've got...
You, you, you see a snapshot in time?
That's exactly right. I'm looking at January 1st each, each year.
Yeah, yeah, that's... Yeah, yeah.
And so, we have money, January 1st this year than we did last year.
February 15th is a different number than January 1st.
Okay.
Because you have, you've been draining stuff out and we haven't had the infusion yet.
Well, but that's the same thing as last year, that we were draining.
We're, we're, I, I'm on the same thing I was, and the staff is on the same thing we were last year, which is-
I mean, we made it by the skin of our teeth last year.
We did, and that's-
So, I think we should make it by the skin of our teeth plus $14,000 this year.
I don't, it'll be, it'll be skin of our teeth and-
So, with the, if, if you don't have $14,000 sitting in a bank, where did it go?
You, see, a P&amp;L is just expenses versus revenue, it's not, it's not a bank account.